Welcome to the Fairhaven Board of Selecting Meeting for Friday, May 27, 2016, here at 5:00, a little bit after, here at the Town Hall. We have just a few things to discuss tonight. We have no minutes to be approved. We have no Town Administrator's Report at this point. But the first order of business would be if we could please stand and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being broadcast and taped by the Government Access Channel. Any member of the public also has a right to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this public meeting. A member of the public who wishes to record this meeting must first notify the Chair and must comply with any reasonable requirements so as not to interfere with the meeting. The Chair is required to inform other attendees of any such recording at the beginning of this meeting. And we are also recording from our office here. Before we begin today, I'd like to just take a moment to have a moment of silence for Mrs. Francis. She is our Fire Chief's mother, who passed away yesterday. So, in that regard, I'd like to please have a moment of silence for Mrs. Francis. Thank you. Selectman Sondola, would you like to ...
Just condolences. I honestly didn't realize, I only heard about this late in the day, and, you know, he showed up at Jeffrey Osuch's, you know, time today to be recognized for his dedication of the Public Works Building. And, you know, I guess, you know, he's just trying to keep up with things in the meantime. But, sorry to hear that. Condolences to his family, he and his family.
Thank you. Selectman Freitas?
Just, I've known the Chief for a long time, and I know he's very, very dedicated to his mom, so I'm very sorry to hear of her passing.
Mr. Reese?
Again, I'd just like to relate that I saw him at the dedication ceremony and expressed my condolences to him and his family on the passing of his mother.
Ms. O'Brien?
Next, and I do this for all the assistant Francis family, so anytime he was there.
And I also know Chief Francis personally, and I know that he was very dedicated, like Selectman Freitas said, to his mother. And I know the family is, you know, very troubled at this time, and we wish them their prayers and support, and anything we can do as a town to assist them at this time. Okay. Our main goal today's meeting is to do the action, to set a vote to date, set a date for special town meeting. That's on our first Action C1. Mr. Reese, do you want to explain the consideration for a special town meeting?
Yes. This was an article that, the sale of the Oxford School was an article that was part of the special town meeting for May 7th. It was voted to pass over the article to allow more time to gather information that was requested from the public about the project. We're in the process of compiling that information, we're almost finalizing with that. Based on the information that will be available within the next week or so, it's felt that it'd be prudent for the selectmen to call a special town meeting for the end of June in order to, if we're successful in getting approval for the sale of the property, that will allow the developer to start aggressively going after the financing that is necessary to move the project forward. There'll be a found, a cycle of fundraising in the early fall that they would need to start working on now in order to submit it, to begin the process of getting the financing together. So, for that reason, it's recommended that you meet today to call a special town meeting on June 30th, that you set a closing date for the town meeting warrant to allow citizen petitions if appropriate, and then to also devote two articles to be placed on the warrant relating to the Oxford School sale.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Selectman Sondola?
I think Mr. Reese said exactly what the intention is here, and, you know, I think we listened to people who wanted more information, and we did not want to just move forward without providing that for them, so we took the time, stepped back. As we mentioned before, Stratford Capital is paying for the town meeting, all the costs associated with it. There's no cost impact to town residents. And, so we just need to, you know, be a very limited agenda that night. We don't, we prefer not to have a summer town meeting, any sort of town meeting, so we tried to also keep it in June, so it wasn't, you know, people's, you know, it would impact the least number of people on vacation and everything, July and August. And, hope that works for everyone.
Thank you. Selectman Freitas?
I think that, I, we gotta get this over with sooner rather than later, so we should let the people decide. So, I don't have a problem with having the town meeting on the 30th.
Okay. So, is there a motion to set the date for special town meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to set a special town meeting on June 30th, 2016, at 7:00 PM at the Hastings Middle School.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here and now, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is passed unanimously. That the special town meeting will be on June 30th at 7:00 PM at Hastings Middle School. Next, we have a vote to open the warrant for special town meeting. Is there a motion to have the warrant open for special town meeting until a certain ...
I guess you can combine a motion, open tonight and close on June 6th at 12:00 noon.
I'd like to make that motion.
Actually, could I ask a question? I did bring this up to Ask Mark the other day, but if we had any of the, if we did get any of the negotiations handled with any of the unions before then, they could be added to this, correct? As long as it was before the, before town meeting?
No, you would have to, before June 6th, vote to include an article that would say to, for the purpose of approving and funding collective bargaining agreements. If you want, you could vote that tonight and put it in as a placeholder, and we could get the verbiage, legal verbiage between now and when you sign it. But again, as I explained to you, I doubt very much we'll have the agreements in line, but if you want to have a placeholder, you can vote it along the lines, I just say, vote to approve and fund collective bargaining agreements, and then we'll put the verbiage together so it's legal and have you sign the actual warrant.
I think it'll be just why, just in case you get one or two that may, may, maybe the BPW, I know the highway to Balmos is kind of further along, so.
Thank you. So, all right, so first, we have to vote for the deadline of June 6th at noon for any articles to be placed on the warrant. Is there a motion for June 6th deadline at noon?
Mr. Chairman, I think what was suggested was one motion, for one motion that would open and close, so.
Yeah, the open now and close on June 6th. Well, I guess, I don't want to be overly tight, but once you call the special town meeting warrant, the warrant is already open, so you're voting to close it on June 6th.
Okay, all right, so I'll make that motion to close the warrant for the special town meeting on June 6th at, what time was it?
12:00 noon.
At 12:00 noon.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here and now, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passed unanimously. Now, is there a motion to place one of the articles on the warrant for a collective bargaining agreement?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Your motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here and now, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passed unanimously.
And then Article 1, the vote to approve the sale of the Oxford School at Stratford?
Would we do two, one and two together, or just?
I'd do it separately.
Should be separate, okay.
Okay, is there a motion for Article 1, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selecting to sell to the Stratford Capital Group LLC the land appearing at Assessors Map 22A, Lot 192, and Assessors Map 22A, Lot 193, and the building thereon constituting the Oxford School, or to take any other action relative thereto?
Just a clarification, it was constituting, but I would like to make that motion.
Second.
I'm telling you, my eyes are getting worse and worse as these days go on and on. Maybe Patty Patel is right, need glasses now, not wait till next year. Okay, so a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here and now, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passed unanimously. And Article 2, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to connect the old fire station so-called, located at 267 Adams Street, Fairhaven, Mass., to the town's sanitary sewer system, and/or to take any action relative thereto.
Like to make that motion?
I actually have a couple of questions on this. Do we have a price on this? Do we have any idea what this, what the cost is? We're kind of asking to have this done, but this could cost?
Yeah, well, it's purposely, we phrase it so that a sum of money. I'm in the process of working with Vinnie, I'm getting a quote associated with it. So, this is, can be deleted depending on what the price is going to be, so you still have full flexibility in terms of funding this, or coming up with alternative ways to fund it. So, this does, gets it on the warrant. We'll provide additional detail between now and town meeting as to what the cost, where the implications are of putting it together. But, given that this is an outstanding issue with the project, I thought it'd be best to put it on the warrant, so at least we could address it if it's necessary at town meeting.
Okay. And could you, could we find out too, before that, where they're going to be connecting to? It's going to be to the backside of the school, or in front of the school?
Vinnie showed me a GPS map that shows that there's a six-inch sewer line that is in the front of the building, front and side of the building.
Okay, thank you. I will second Bob's ...
Made a motion.
Bob's motion.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here and now, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passed unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, we have not set a date yet for the public outreach meeting to review with the public the information we're garnering now, but we anticipate hopefully it'll be sometime, perhaps the week of June 13th. We just need to confirm that the information will be available, as well as the people who, from Stratford, can be available as well.
Okay, so, that being said, there'll be a public meeting with the setup and framework of what the Stratford Group is proposing to do for the Oxford School with photos and detailed information for our public meeting prior to town meeting. So, there will be a meeting prior to town meeting for that?
And we hope to get the information posted on the website as soon as we get it finalized.
And also, information posted on the website prior to that. Mr. Maderas?
Okay, can I just, Mr. Chairman, I just, I just wanted to clarify that you mentioned photos, but they're actually architectural renderings of the building that's proposed, so that's, that's what was requested, and that's what.
When is that date going to be?
We haven't said it yet. We're hoping towards sometime there, the week of June 13th.
We have, if I might?
It's not set, though. It's not set, though.
So, we have received preliminary renderings. They're fairly detailed, but there are a couple of little things that need to be added to them, so that's, you know, I would say they're probably 90% done. So, just to give you a sense that this is already well in the works, and it's just the few things that, when they sent them to us, we sent back some questions. So, before we present them to the public and put them on, online, we wanted, you know, make sure they were done.
The general public hasn't received anything in weeks, so that we're like somewhat in the dark. I know that NFIA met weeks ago, and I'd like to pass this out, if I could at this time, it is that, we have four copies. We've been gathering some, some questions, because people have been sending to us at NFIA, and what we're trying to do is like, we have conduit, so that we can get those questions all together, and you'll see what that is. And what we're trying to do is really be like proactive to help out as much as we can, although some of us are really adamant against housing, some are for housing, some are neutral. I'll be very honest with you, I'm like, I want to see housing, but I want to see the density of what's being proposed. So, I'm, I gotta like, I'm between, between, really, we're trying to say and do. It's just that, we've got a lot of questions, but sometimes the questions we're asking is they, it should almost be them telling us what they're going to do, is we're asking them something that they should already know what they're going to do. And that's where like, we're, we're going to gather this, but, and we're going to be next Tuesday, I believe it is, on the 31st, at NFIA, and we're going to have a lot of these questions put together, and we'd like to get them to the board probably before the end of the week, if we possibly could. We'd like to have a lot of these questions, if we're going to obviously put them in writing, we'd like to get them back in writing, so that we have something to send to the public that's asking us what's happening. Some of them are very, very concerned about what's happening there, is, I mean, that's what we have to, I don't know if anybody else in the audience has anything else to say, but that's, we want to be helpful if we can, but, but you're keeping us somewhat in the dark, and even a meeting like tonight is like, Friday afternoon at 5:00 on a long weekend, is kind of unusual for a public meeting like this. It's almost like, you know, it's, it doesn't go good with the general public being, and you being communicative, communicating to us what is happening with this thing going on.
Are you interested?
Yes.
So, Mr. Reese will, you know, back me up on this, that when we were selecting tonight for this meeting, I expressed that very concern that, okay, we want to make sure that people do not, you know, this is an abnormal time. We set this time because when we looked at where we had to be, we had to get something in this week, and this is the timeframe all three selectmen could be there. One thing that made me feel more comfortable is, there's nothing on this warrant that's in any way controversial. We already, we already established at town meeting that we were going to need a special town meeting to address this. All this is doing is addressing that we are going to have a town meeting, and that there will be articles on it. No decisions are going to be made on the articles, there's no new information to be presented, and we, we also knew at the time we were setting this meeting date, that we're going to have a full public forum for any and all questions, as you mentioned, to be addressed, you know, in the coming weeks, well before town meeting. So, we felt like this was not, you know, a concern, because we didn't intend for this to be anything really other than setting the date. And, you know, the new, the new comment came up, well, collective bargaining, just to put a placeholder on, but I, that's, I mean, really what it was. We didn't intend for this to be a whole session of trying to bring new information, because we didn't, we're not there yet.
I'll say again, it could have been put on the warrant about the special town meeting, but it could also have said something about Oxford School, because that's really the primary reason the special town meeting has happened, is because of Oxford School. And it's really not on the agenda about Oxford School. And with all said and done, you know, let's just move on, please.
I, of the precinct meeting, and I just remember hearing that we intended to have the meeting at the town meeting in fall, and that was the message that went out to everybody that night. So, this is such an abrupt change, with not the same amount of notice of, or, or, you know, you would talk to a, to a large group of people, town meeting members, and say we expect it to be in the fall, and then again, we hit Friday night at 5:00. So, this, that seems to be an abrupt shift.
Again, maybe.
Yes.
I don't believe that message came from us necessarily to say that it's, it's going to be in the fall. I think we, we talked about a town meeting possibly, that we would have a town meeting in the fall for contracts. We knew that was coming, but we, I believe, said before this that it could be in the fall or the summer, we were trying to figure that out.
Yeah, I don't recall it said it was.
I think we just tabled it, to be honest with you.
Right, so, someone, if I might just, whatever was said in the precinct meeting might have been someone's interpretation of that, or what they heard, or something once removed, and I don't, I don't know, but I, you know, from our, I don't recall us ever saying it will be in the fall.
No, as a matter of fact, when we were discussing the ranges, the MOU with Stratford, we were talking about the date to hold the special town meeting so that we wouldn't extend the timeline that was associated with the purchase, and that was in the middle of the summer, and we wanted to see if we could conduct a special town meeting sooner than that, in order to hold a town meeting prior to the summer months, which was why we went to the June 30th.
And I can say that Charlie, the other night, when we were here on Monday, he specifically said that we have a meeting for the Oxford School based on Friday night.
Mr. Chairman, if I just, we, we did very stringently, we have to stick to a timeline, you know, for instance, a special town meeting, we need 14 days to have something posted in a precinct, in all precincts. So, we're very much, we have to stick to that timeline, and that's why we work backwards from the date, and we work backwards. And one of the things that was brought up was, instead of having it be next week, or having it be on a Monday night, or something like that, we tried to give as much time as possible for any kind of citizen petitions, you know, because then the opposite criticism would hold up. You didn't give enough time for other people to, to file their petitions. So, this was to give people additional time. That was the intention.
Yes.
All I can say is, I was at precinct meeting, and I came with a distinct impression that the, the special town meeting, you want to be happening in the fall.
And, and in fact, we, we may have to have another special town meeting in, in the fall. If we have union negotiations that are done, we may have to have a fall town meeting. So, this may be a town meeting at the end of June, and we may have to have another one actually in the fall also. So, we may have a series of, and depending on how this vote goes to at special town, at our special town meeting, there may be, it may be carried over to another meeting. We don't know until town meeting comes, but we, we more than likely, if we do do the union negotiations, we may have another town meeting again in the fall.
What will the information we need to give, in this vote here?
I believe so.
Yeah, we haven't said either here or upstairs.
I, I think likely it would be upstairs. My, my opinion would be that we should consider having it upstairs, because we know if the turnout's anything like the last time, and I would suspect it would be, it's really, we just have to be prepared to do it up there and set up the equipment.
Is there somewhat of a guarantee, but is all the information that Strat is going to come up with be available by that time or before, so that we don't have to sit there and say, they're going to answer that eventually, they're going to answer that eventually, like they did the last time? Is it all going to be, this is it?
Well, again, there's, there's no guarantees, because we don't know what all the questions are going to be, but we hope by next week to be able to release the renderings that have been received by us already on the town's cable, or on our website, so people can look at it. And we certainly, I welcome the opportunity for you to forward us written questions that we can then try to answer, or will answer, prior to the informational meeting. But as you know, people, it's not unusual that questions develop over time. As people get more information, sometimes that generates more questions.
So, if I might just, and putting it a different way, is, when we had the meeting on April 13th, I think, was the date of the last meeting upstairs, we had a series of concerns and questions that came, so we've tried to address all of those that we, you know, that we, we took note of. You know, for example, the rendering was one of them, the tie-in for the septic was another one, handicap accessibility was a third, you know, some errors that were noted on drawings was a fourth. All of those things that we noted from that meeting are intended to be addressed in full when we meet again in open public meeting. So, any new questions, as Mr. Reese said, we can anticipate. If they come into us in a timely enough manner, like your meeting is next Tuesday, if we receive them on Wednesday, for example, there may be an opportunity to answer all those questions by the time we have that next meeting, but it depends on the nature of the question.
Well, NFIA proposes to meet next Tuesday, on the 31st, and we're hoping by the end of the week, we'll have all the questions in writing, so that should be plenty of time for Strat to, and there's not only questions for Strat, there's questions for the town officials, because we have some questions of you. And we expect, we like those answers at that, you know, reasonable time, so they, because there might be more questions when you give us answers.
Right. So, again, when we were setting the schedule for that meeting, and Mr. Reese said we proposed that week of the 13th, one of the reasons why we proposed that week was because it allows us a little time to make this announcement, and have people have an opportunity to make comments, and it also is kind of in the middle of, between now and the special town meeting date, so that also gives a little time after, so whatever questions that come up. We didn't want to be three days away from town meeting, having this open meeting, because then if some new questions came up, we couldn't answer, we wouldn't have time, so we tried to space it in the middle for that reason.
Let's hope it all works out for us.
Right, that's what we're hoping.
Very good. Any other comments? Okay. We don't have any appointments today, we don't have any discussion or correspondence. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen is Monday, June 6th, 2016, at 6:30 PM, and I don't believe we have anything for executive session.
It was correspondence, or yes or no?
That's, that's general business.
Oh, okay.
That'll probably be for our next meeting.
Okay.
So, before we conclude, is there anything you'd like to mention? Selectman Sondola?
Well, I mean, I figure you, you might mention this, but I'll just say that I think it was a very nice ceremony this morning for Mr. Osuch, a dedication of the Public Works facility on Arcean Street, and I'd just like to thank everyone who did show up to honor him this morning, and, including Representative Strauss, who we mentioned the other night, is always very supportive, and he's always, seems to be there, has a long history with Mr. Osuch. It was nice for him to be there and say a few words, and, as well as, as you, Mr. Chairman, and, so, also, just happy Memorial Day to everyone, and hope to see you all at the parade.
Thank you. Selectman Freitas?
I just want to congratulate Jeff on, on the building, being named after him. I was on the Board of Public Works when we took that, took that vote. I could not make it today, but I wish I had been there, and I want everybody to have a safe, happy, you know, Memorial Day weekend, and behave yourselves.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add one more thing, it's really just, last, I think it was last year, that we had such a terrible time with the PA system at the Riverside Cemetery. And we since placed new PA systems on order, and I was confirmed to me by Mr. Jodwin, the EMA, that they've arrived, and he's going to use one, so hopefully we'll have a nice, clean audio for, for the parade, so when you read your Logan's orders.
Thank you. And also, when I read my nice big print of the Memorial Day of all the people that thank you, Ann, because it's got to that point in my life that I do need the big print, so I can make sure I don't say anybody's name wrong, especially like with appointments, you know, on the boards. I'd like to, to thank Jeff Osuch for today also, and also the Board of Public Works, and many people that showed up for his dedication of his, the building, the Jeffrey Osuch Board of Public Works, and he was very humbled to have that designation, and we're very grateful for all the work he's done for the town of Fairhaven, and thank him for his service. Memorial Day Parade kicks off at 8:30 AM on Monday, so I encourage everyone to get a nice spot. I believe that as the flag is being brought up at Fairhaven High School, our moderator will be announcing different groups and people that are in the Memorial Day Parade, so I encourage everyone to get there, get a good spot. I heard it's going to be a good day, so it'd be a great day for a parade. And then, the conclusion of the parade at Riverside Cemetery, where the name of fallen veterans will be mentioned, and, and listed by name, and, as well as Logan's orders, and another nice ceremony, giving true respect to our veterans at the Memorial Day Ceremony. And also, to remind everyone that on Sunday, June 5th, will be our Fairhaven High School graduation, and for, I'd like to congratulate all the graduates of Fairhaven High School, and the selectmen are usually in attendance for that, so I'd like to promote that here, and encourage all the Fairhaven High graduates. One thing that I love when we go to Fairhaven High Graduation is to hear the enormous amount of money that our Fairhaven High School students have gotten in scholarships. It's always amazing, and it's, it's just, it's phenomenal. So, these students have worked very hard, and this is a great culmination of their success with our Fairhaven High graduation on Sunday.
We have a tax title on June 4th, you want to mention that?
And we have a tax title here, I believe, in this room, at 10:00 AM on Saturday, June 4th, if anyone would like to participate in the tax title, where two properties, I believe, are going to be auctioned off. So, if you'd like to come and participate in that, you're that, you're more than welcome to, it's open to the public. And lastly, we have these, yesterday was Red Nose Day, and, Ann, do you want to explain what Red Nose Day is?
I can explain as much as I know, I, from what I've heard, it's, those are a gift from Patty Pacella, and she said that Bob would understand.
Yeah, except that I thought she was going to be here with us, but.
It brings awareness to poverty, particularly childhood poverty.
So I encourage the selectmen, since we have these noses, and, and we may get some, you know, some feedback that we're clowns, but it's okay, it's for a good cause, and it'll probably be in the newspaper, but it's okay, it's a good cause, so I encourage to put on our red noses. And say that we'd like to end childhood poverty as best we can.
Give a thumbs up.
You could be Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, too.
This is true, so, and thank you Patty for bringing awareness to ending childhood poverty, which is of course something that we all truly believe in.
Thank you Patty, we owe you.
This came from, I was at a meeting at Public Works yesterday, and I saw people running around with these, because Linda Schick had brought some over, over there, so.
It's a nice clause, and it's a funny way of sell it, you know, bring an awareness to a very serious item, but also creating awareness so that people won't forget about it, so that's, I think, the reason why the red noses are very prominent, so we can have that. Okay, so that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Here and now we'll call for a vote, all is in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? unanimously, thank you, and happy Memorial Day.